Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you all to the Passaic County Board of Chosen Freeholders Conference Agenda for October 27, 2015. I'm gonna call upon the clerk for a roll call.
Freeholders. Bartlett.
Present.
Best.
Present.
Petronio.
Present.
Delphi.
Here.
Deputy Director James.
Here.
Director Laura.
Here.
I'd like to call upon the Administrator for the Administrator's Report.
First on our agenda, the presentation of County of Passaic Business Appreciation Awards. First up, Patsy's Tavern located in Patterson, New Jersey. Mr. Steve Barbarello and Mr. Gary Barbarello from Patsy's Tavern.
Yeah.
And we are also calling up Mrs. Deborah Hoffman.
Good evening. My name is Carrie. We greatly appreciate the dedication of our business community in Passaic County. And tonight, who will be awarded two Business Appreciation Awards to Patsy's Tavern and Patterson School.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Bartlett.
The Board of Chosen Freeholders. Excuse me, but the whole agreement for free holders, Terry.
We practiced this.
There we go. The Board of Chosen Freeholders, County of Passaic, New Jersey Proclamation. Whereas the Passaic County Board of Chosen Freeholders is committed to maintaining and improving the quality of life for its business community, ensuring access to capital, excellence, transportation routes, and an education-scale labor force. And whereas this board is patently proud of its business community and its accomplishments as such desire to honor and promote Patsy's Tavern. And whereas Patsy's Tavern was founded in 1931 by Paswell, Patsy's Barbolo in Patterson in the same location on 7th Avenue that it currently occupies and is now a third-generation restaurant owned and operated by Patsy's grandsons, Steve and Gary, following their father and mother, Ralph and Marilyn into the business. And whereas Patsy's was one of the first restaurants in Patterson to receive a liquor license after prohibition ended. And whereas Patsy's utilizes the same pizza oven and recipes handed down by their grandfather since the restaurant was open. Specializing in their word, free home, thin crust brick oven pizza, meatballs, rice capplet, rice balls, eggplant parmesan, and a true seasonal specialty, stuffed artichoke. And whereas Patsy's Tavern has been recognized by the Village Voice as making one of the top five pizzas in Passaic County. And the Star Ledger Pizza Power Ranking Survey rated the restaurant as one of the top pizza restaurants in the state, noting that the restaurant is atmospheric, old-school bar with a crackery crusted, prison-dee greasy plain pizza, not easy to find from where the head is. And whereas Patsy's customers are devoted to the restaurants visiting from throughout the tri-state region to experience the old-world specialties and to introduce their children to Patsy's special cuisine. And whereas rooted in tradition, Steve and Gary Barbarello insist that our customers are our priority, that every dish is created from the recipes that our grandparents crafted. And whereas Patsy's Tavern has demonstrated its commitment to the community of Passaic throughout the employment of local residents, the continued reinvestment in their company and their strong leadership. Now therefore, it then proclaimed by the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic that hereby publicity presents the Passaic County Business Appreciation Award to Patsy's Tavern for its continued commitment to the community. And be it further proclaimed that this board extends its sincere best wishes to Patsy's Tavern for continued success. Thank you.
Well, first of all, I want to thank Anthony De Nova and all the freeholders for this award. We're very honored. My brother couldn't be here tonight at the restaurant marketing. Patsy's were a third generation, and we try and stay to the standards that my parents gave us before us and their parents before them, my grandparents. We try and keep it simple. We try and give everybody a great meal at reasonable price in a nice atmosphere. And for the award we've been getting, as was said here, I think my grandparents and parents would be proud of us, you know, for what we maintained. It's hard to keep a business going for 1931, but we'll keep it going as long as we could. Again, thank you very much.
If I could just, I can't let Patsy's go without saying, I don't know, other than maybe Bill Paschrell here, maybe Nick Rock and Steve. As Riversideers, we grew up in Patsy's. In fact, I tell everybody, I've been going to Patsy's since I'm in the womb. And I have a picture of my mother pregnant for me in Patsy's Tavern. So it's been home to us, it continues to be home for us. Steve and I happen to live in the same town as well. He's older than me, so I can't say we grew up in each other's home. But great honor. If anyone, if you've never been to Patsy's Tavern, you have to go. It is an experience like none other. And I know I'll make a lot of it with the best pizza in Passaic County. So congratulations.
Thank you.
And to passaic, we serve the sheriff's department.
Next, Contos Foods Incorporated located in Patterson, New Jersey. Mr. Steve Contos, President. Freeholder Best will be presenting the award.
My name is Barton Reed, and I'll be presenting on behalf of Freeholder Best. Whereas the Passaic County Board of Chosen Freeholders is committed to maintaining and improving the quality of life for its business community, ensuring access to capital, excellence, transportation routes, and an educated, skilled labor force. And whereas this board is particularly proud of its business community and its accomplishments, and has such desires to honor and promote Kunto's Foods. And whereas Kunto's Foods was founded in 1988 by Everett and St. Kunto's in Patterson, New Jersey, following 70 years of experience in the city. And whereas Kunto's Foods was the first U.S. company to take black bread from its ethnic roots to the mass market, today manufacturing in their 163,000 square-foot facilities and facilities. And whereas Kunto's Foods employs over 220 full-time employees in the manufacture of hand-finished black bread, vanilla pastry dough, and other related products, offering more than 50 varieties of black breads, including pocketless pita, traditional pita of the eastern, um, um, vegetarian, Asian, damn, low-carb Greek lifestyle, Russick's collection, and Panini cocktail black bread, and recently expanded their manufacturing line into all-natural French-style restaurants. And whereas, the company also distributes imported Greek origin food products, including feta cheese, um, Calamont's olives, our sweet yogurt, dolomites, um, extra virgin olive oil, and many other regional products. And whereas Kunto's Foods sells its products throughout the country, exports abroad, selling direct international distributional facilities such as Cisco, US Foods Performance Group, Performance Group Group, and Restaurant Hito. And retail customers such as Wegmans, King's, Shoprite, Stop &amp; Shop, Costco, Thirwick, and other major food retailers. And whereas the company contributes to many local charities, including Patterson Capital Tech for humanity, St. Joseph's Regional Medical Center Foundation, and Table to Table. And whereas Kunto's Foods is known for its quality, excellence, and innovation, and embraces the byline that they, you're preparing dinner for your family, lunch for 100 restaurants at home, or those special desserts for the pastry, also in your market. Kunto's has the finest products for your culinary needs. And whereas Kunto's Foods has demonstrated its commitment to the County of Passaic, the employment of local residents, the continued reinvestment in their company and their strong leadership. Now therefore, be a complaint, complaint by the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic, hereby publicly presents the Passaic County Business Appreciation Award to Kunto's Foods for its continued commitment to the community, and be a further complaint that this board extends its sincere best wishes to Kunto's Foods for continued success.
Okay, I want to thank Deborah Hoffman for this honor of proclamation here. I want to thank all the board here of the Freeholders, Passaic County Freeholders. We, I've been doing this for 27, 28 years, the Calhous track, and I'm ready for the next 27, 28 years. And maybe the next set after that. So we love being in Patterson, and we are in Patterson, even though we're here, Passaic County, but we love being in this area. It's a good community, it's a great logistical area, and we're happy to come to make the future brighter for the manufacturing. It's tough, there's a lot of parameters, we deal with it every day, and we cross those bridges, and it's not as difficult as everybody makes it sound, but it's there. So we want to thank everybody here. It's, like I said, the 28 years have been interesting, and I'm ready for the next 28 years. Thank you.
I would like to invite Deborah Hoffman to say a few words.
Is that voice different? Do I get it?
Yeah. The new you.
The new me. Thank you so much. And I'll give you our first presentation.
Can I please have all the recipients up here to take a picture, please?
Make sure you're looking at Lou.
Lou.
Oh.
You got a new Lou.
You're taking the video.
Okay.
You have everybody?
Yeah.
Congratulations. I started.
What'd you lose there?
The first recipient, Salomon Zakib Ha, received a $900 scholarship funded by PSCNG, and she graduated from PCTI and attends Rutgers University. Can you please come up to the podium?
Definitely. Make sure you have it right. Thanks.
recommending Salomon Zakib for the scholarship. Salomon Zakib currently ranks 16 in his class of 776 with a remarkable 4.28 GPA in all of his academics. He impressively has ranked within the top 2% each year. He has been a student at Passaic County Technical Institute. He has been and continues to be on the principal's honor roll, and has been honored by members of the faculty to be part of the circle of success for his work in the vocational area under Project Lead the Way. Salomon Zakib's other accomplishments include being a member of the executive board to the National Owner Society for the past year, and being, during his freshman year. Salomon Zakib had also demonstrated his enthusiasm to be a future leader by being involved with extracurricular programs such as Montclair State University Afford Bound Program, William Patterson University, Aime High Academy, and Monty Mayor Teen Institute's Summer Leadership Conference. Being a member of our school's engineering club, Salomon Zakib was part of the two-member team who competed last year in the Mobile Robotics Technology category of the Skills USA State Championships. Salomon Zakib is a highly motivated individual who knows exactly what his future holds and will continue to strive until his goals have been fulfilled. Salomon Zakib is a well-deserving recipient of the NJAC PCEG scholarship, PSEG scholarship, college or university of choice, Rutgers University College of Engineering, and attended program of study Electrical Engineering.
It's hard to use simple words to express how grateful I am for being a recipient of this award, but I would like to give a heartfelt thank you to the New Jersey Association of Counties, the Investors Bank, and the Passaic County Board of Chosen Freeholders for allowing me to have this scholarship, and obviously my parents for being a constant source of motivation. Thank you.
Next, I would like to invite Erja Gandhi to please stand up. Erja Gandhi received a $500 scholarship funded by Investors Bank. She graduated from PCTI and attends Montclair State University. I would like to call upon Deputy Director Bruce James to present the award.
The following are remarks from the staff of the Passaic County technical institute recommending Salomon Zakib for the scholarship. Erha's academic performance is extremely notable. The National Owner Society and More Language Owner Society School has maintained at least a 4.0 GPA since freshman year, exceptionally gene-gene mine, insightful, and determined art adjutant that immediately comes to mind when discovering Erha. She is a positive, highly motivated, and her transcript reflects her strong work ethic. Meeting the demands of her rigorous course lore is a welcome challenge for Erha. At the same time, she has been very involved in various clubs and activities at PCTI. She has volunteered over 100 hours of service at the state public library, 32 hours at Gotham City Ortho Clinic, and over 750 hours at St. Mary's Hospital. One of Erha's special interests, helping others, which is the vision she shares, is to make the most of opportunities to volunteer services. Erha's parents have had a great impact upon her, they are very encouraging and supporting. She credits her history teacher as being very influential in her overall academic work. In our NJOTC program, Erha is a vision leader and a super representative for the senior class. I am confident that Erha will be successful in her future and...
I would like to thank the Investors Bank for awarding the scholarship, and also I'd like to thank my parents and my teachers in high school who actually had a strong support in what I'm doing right now. My teacher, my history teacher, was the one who actually gave me a strong foundation of studies and stuff like that, that let me go to Montclair and study biochemistry. And I just want to appreciate everyone's help and the Freeholders' help in giving me this scholarship. Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have the presentation and overview of the New Jersey Department of Transportation Complete Streets Excellence Award for policy and implementation to the County of Passaic. This is presented by Freeholder Bartlett.
As Chair of the Planning and Economic Development Committee, I represented Passaic County in Brunswick yesterday at the New Jersey Department of Transportation Complete Streets Conference at Rutgers University. Passaic County is the first county in New Jersey to receive a Complete Streets Excellence Award from the New Jersey Department of Transportation, and we have the most comprehensive complete streets policy of any New Jersey county. The New Jersey Department of Transportation produced the video to tell you more. Lou, please play the video.
Passaic County is a diverse place, with both cities and suburban areas contrasted with the scenic beauty of our very rural areas. And in 2010, we attended the Complete Streets Summit at Willesden, Iowa, where we learned what streets are for everyone, the complete streets better reflect our values and a plan for diversity of place, people, and choice. I guess you could say the summit started us thinking, and it brought us to the place that we are today, a county with a plan, policy, and an implementation strategy that we can be proud of. A policy by itself isn't enough, and we needed to develop a decision-making process that had our vision, our policy, and design targets that all mutually enforced each other, and that's what we did. Our policy was adopted in February of 2014 after three years of deliberate discussion, research, planning, testing. The developer of transportation of the national plan was a catalyst in the process. We created a forum for the planning and engineering departments to discuss the benefits of complete streets, and how we can add to our county. Planning and engineering staff worked together to define a network of facilities in terms of lane use and the context of each roadway that would have an impact on feasibility, connectivity, and safety. So the complete streets guidelines serve as a pivot between the planning priorities and the engineering details outlined by New Jersey DOT and ASHEL. But the policy was the final step in the process, and has the decision of being an implementation plan and not just a policy. But the complete streets guidelines are just that, guidelines on how we can implement complete streets. Their guidelines aren't handcuffs, and don't describe how everything should be done, but they provide context and a decision-making tool in designing complete streets. And it's really simple, instead of projects standing alone, on their own, that are now being planned within a framework of projects that shows the big picture of how complete streets work. So ultimately, I feel like we put together a very clear policy and planning framework, but the success for us is going to be measured by outcomes. And in order to have outcomes, we have to have implementation. Implementation of complete streets happens a few different ways and through a few different programs. We have made incredible progress through our resurfacing program. But this is the long-hanging fruit that is inexpensive and very impactful. The way the resurfacing program works, we evaluate the roadway with, and then decide under the complete streets guidelines what treatments we can do to each road. Between 2012 and 2015, we've implemented over 100 miles of complete streets treatments, including 33 miles of shared roadways, 15 miles of bicycle lanes, 54 miles of traffic calming, and eight miles of road die. A road die reduces the number of lanes dedicated to motor vehicles and provides that with for the exclusive use of pedestrians and bicyclists. Basically, our engineering isn't pro forma, look, value, implementation. Judgment and really thinking about the vision and our transportation system comprehensively is how we approach things. I know that people have concerns about complete streets, such as liability and traffic impacts. However, we were very confident in those two aspects because as long as we followed the accepted engineering standards, liability is not an issue at all, and as long as we do the proper traffic studies to assess the impact on traffic, then that also is not an issue. It's a very way of doing things, and we think it's been great for the county. By authorizing a complete streets policy, we direct our planning and roads departments to incorporate these considerations into everything that they do, from major capital plans to annual restructuring and recirculation projects. The Freeholders' authorization also lets our municipalities know that we will support and work with them to make complete streets a reality in every city and town. I'm proud that Passaic County has the most comprehensive complete streets policy in the state of New Jersey. It is something that determines sports our communities, and it's something that we're going to support today and going forward.
Thank you for the great presentation, and a special thank you to school, Melissa Carlow. Now we'll do a review of the agenda K1 through K40 and L1. Are there any questions from my colleagues? County Council, do we have any late starters?
Director, I have a few late starters. K41, Resumption of Offerings and Purchase of Cloud Lays Needed for Passaic County Road Department, cloud vehicles in Patterson and Pompton Lakes garages, from Flisside Body Corporation to State Government. Director. Oh, we need five votes added to the agenda. Oh, we need five votes to add it to the agenda. K-42. With resolution authorizing repair of the hydraulic system of cloud tram trucks number 97 needed for Passaic County Road Department, cloud vehicles in Cliffside Body Corporation early contract. We need five votes to add it to the agenda. K-43. Resolution to award contracts to road traffic in New Jersey for repair of the case 52-1B road reused by Passaic County Road Department at the Patterson Road Department South. We need five votes to add it to the agenda. K-44. Resolution authorizing base for a pool of qualified contractors with established unit prices for on-call emergency residential repair, replacement of heating system for the county of Passaic and as a needed basis for a period of one year. We need five votes to add it to the agenda.
County Council, do we have any reason to go into executive session?
No.
Before I ask for motion adjourned, I would like to invite the students who received scholarships up for a picture and their families. We can please have our assistants behind the stands. At this moment, I would ask for a motion to adjourn the conference agenda. Moved by Freeholder Duffy. May I have a second? Second. Second by Freeholder Bartlett. May I have a roll call, please?
Freeholders. Bartlett. Best.
Here.
Katronio.
Here.
Duffy. Lapore.
Here.
Deputy Director James. Director Laura.
Yes.
Laura. Sorry.
Thank you for joining us, and at this point, we will be going into our regular meeting. At this point, I would like to call upon the clerk to make an announcement of the open public meeting.
Ladies and gentlemen, the notice requirement of the Open Public Meetings Law has been satisfied with respect to this meeting. Specifying the time, date, and location included in the annual notice. Adopted at the reorganization meeting, filed with the county clerk, posted in the administration building, and mailed to two newspapers in accordance with the provisions of the law.
May I have a roll call?
Freeholders. Bartlett. Best.
Here.
Katronio. Duffy. Lapore. President. Deputy Director James. Director Laura.
Yes.
May I ask everyone to stand by the, stand for the invocation, pledge of allegiance, and moment of silence? I'd like to call Faith up for the invocation.
O God, who provides for thy people by thy power and road, over them in love, be gracious enough so to bless thy servants. Our freeholders, in this county of Passaic, that thy people may dwell in peace and safety throughout our Lord. Amen.
I'd like to call upon Hector for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hello, my name is Hector, and well, since you guys are already all standing, good luck to me. Our pledge to the citizens is to defy the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its form. Our request for a moment of silence to remember all the men and women who have died while serving the United States armed forces. Thank you. Ah, thank you.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of October 13, 2015?
Motion.
Second. Motion made by Freeholder Duffy. Second. Second by Deputy Director James. Roll call, please.
Freeholders.
Bartlett.
Bartlett. Best. Katronio.
Here.
Duffy.
Here.
Lapore. President. Deputy Director James. Director Laura.
Yes.
May I have a motion to approve all the proclamation noted?
Move it.
All moved.
Second. Moved by Freeholder Duffy. Moved by Freeholder Lapore. Second by Freeholder Best. Roll call, please.
Freeholders. Bartlett. Best.
Yes.
Katronio. Duffy. Lapore.
Yes.
Deputy Director James. Director Laura.
Yes.
May I have a motion to accept the communications?
Move it.
Motion by Freeholder Duffy. Second. Second. By Lapore. Freeholder Lapore. Roll call.
Freeholders. Bartlett. Best.
Yes.
Katronio.
Here.
Duffy. Lapore.
Yes.
Deputy Director James. Director Laura.
Yes.
May I have a motion to open the public portion of the meeting?
So be it.
Motion by Freeholder Duffy.
Second.
Second by Freeholder Bartlett.
Best.
Best. Roll call.
Freeholders. Bartlett. Best. Katronio.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lapore.
Yes.
Deputy Director James. Director Laura.
Yes.
At this moment, I would like to invite members of the audience to address the days. Please state your name, address, and you have three minutes.
I came back here at a county meeting back in December 9th, 2014, and brought to the attention of the board a Hamburg Turnpike construction camp that had been destroyed even by nature, for whatever reason, I don't know why they were destroyed. I was told at that time by our engineer that it would take six months, basically, to replace them, that we needed to order the equipment. Here we are 10 months later, and those two have still been out being replaced. The one in Creighton probably is going on two years. Okay, the one on Hamburg Turnpike in Valley Road is a brand-new one, and I don't know about it yet, at least 10 months, if not longer, maybe a year. So it concerns me that we don't have this in our inventory. It's a very dangerous thing, it's a piece of steel. If someone were to hit that again, who knows what would happen? Okay, they're designed to take an impact-on-impact cushion, take the energy away. I would really like to know a reason why they haven't been replaced yet. I find it very disturbing that here the taxpayers of this county pay for that, and people that travel on Hamburg Turnpike, the danger we've inflicted. I've also been to prior meetings where I've brought to the attention areas of Hamburg Turnpike that are in need of repair pavement-wise. One of the sections was off a manner of drive, was repaired, but was patched. It's a brand-new road, it's maybe two or three years old. I find it very disturbing that the method that we use to patch our brand-new paved roads is just patch them, we don't cut them out, pave them, and then seal them with tar. There's a section in front of Squat Place, Hamburg Turnpike, still having some repair. Section on Hamburg Turnpike going south towards Patterson, just before the Passaic County Police Station, probably a quarter mile before that. That's been like that for probably good two years. Again, I mean eventually what's going to happen is going to deteriorate even further through winter. I asked about a program in patching the cracked roads. Section of Hamburg Turnpike through Pompton Lakes, probably two years old. You would drive down that and see the cracks that are forming down the center to the sides of winter time? When we have a melt and a freeze, it's going to just destroy the road. And it's very expensive, and I just don't understand why we do not have a program to fill those cracks. It just makes no sense to me when I drive out into Warren County, all their county roads you can see, they fill the cracks. Again, it's much cheaper to repair those cracks than it is to repaint the whole road. It just seems to me there's no urgency to get it done. Okay? Again, I find it amazing that here, if this was a business, you'd be out of business. If someone would just find someone else to do it. But unfortunately, we, the taxpayers of this county, cannot do that. Again, my taxes are very expensive, probably the highest, if not the highest in New Jersey. Okay, the count.
I'm sorry, but your time is now up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the freeholders?
Seeing no one at the podium, move to close the public portion.
Motion second. Motion made to close the public portion by Freeholder Duffy. Second by Freeholder Lapore. May I have a roll call?
Freeholders. Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Katronio.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lapore.
Yes.
Deputy Director James. Director Laura.
Yes.
I would like to address the questions by saying we are looking at this. We have the Director of Engineering that we will ask to please address the question with the gentleman.
This is Mark. Your first one with the guardrail encaps on Hamburg Turnpike, well, I'll tell you that specialized work that the county cannot perform, but we do that work under guardrail contracts with contractors through the Morris County Co-op. I will find out for you where it is with respect to that project. I don't have an answer for you. That's the time I'm going to be done, and I'll get back to you within the next couple of days on that, and I'll tell you once we're done. The repairs in Hamburg Turnpike, it all depends upon when the road was last resurfaced. We have a requirement that if the road has been resurfaced within the last five years, then the repair must be billed and paid for the repair. If the resurfacing is greater than five years old, then it is just a patch in the roadway. I will verify that the three areas we talked about, near Drive Squat Place and by the sheriff's headquarters, when they were last resurfaced, and if they are temporary out there, or if that is a complete match. If it was resurfaced within the last five years, then that, the utility or the entity that caused that opening, it has to go back out and be known resurfaced. As far as the crack filling operations, we are looking into that. We are budgeting to get that equipment to have that done, and we hope to get that started up next year.
Thank you. Now we're moving to the consent agenda. May I have a motion to add K-41 through K-44? As well as L-2? Resolution consenting to the loan to the city of Patterson by the Passaic County Improvement Authority and the issuance of bonds in connection with such loan. Motion?
Second.
Motion by Freeholder Duffy. Second by Freeholder Bartlett.
Second.
Roll call.
Freeholders. Bartlett. Freeholders. Freeholders. Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Katronio.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lapore.
Yes.
Deputy Director James. Director Laura.
Yes.
May I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Freeholder Duffy. Second. Second by Freeholder Best. May I have a motion to vote on K-1 through K-44, as well as L-1 and L-2? Okay, may I have a motion to vote on K-1 through K-44?
Move. Second.
Motion by Freeholder Duffy. Second by Freeholder Best. Roll call.
Freeholders. Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Katronio. Duffy.
Yes.
Lapore.
Yes.
Deputy Director James. Director Laura.
Yes. Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, at this point, we would like to thank all of the participants from Student Government Day. I think they did an excellent job, and we ask that you please give them a round of applause. I know you mean a free holder, but I admit, I think my director did a much better job than I do on most of these. Thank you very much, boys, and they will come down for the days, so the free holders should be pleased.
Thank you.
Right. Have a motion to accept L-1?
I made that one.
Motion made by Free Holder Duffy, seconded by Free Holder Lapore. Roll call.
Free holders, Bartlett. Best. Duffy.
Yes.
Lapore. Deputy Director James. Director Laura.
Have a motion to accept L-2?
Move it.
Moved by Free Holder Lapore, seconded by Deputy Director James. Roll call.
Free holders, Bartlett. Best.
Yes.
Katronio. Duffy. Lapore.
Yes.
Deputy Director James. Director Laura.
Yes. Under new business, we have, when it's 2015-08, the resolution authorizing the guarantee by the County of Passaic of New Jersey of the payment of the principal of an interest on governmental loan revenue bond series 2015. Passaic County guarantees the City of Patterson project of the Passaic County Improvement Authority in aggregate principal amount, now exceeding $27,395,000.
Just, Director, we are to receive the supplemental debt statement from our CFP.
Move it. Moved by Free Holder Lapore, seconded by Deputy Director James. Roll call.
Free holders, Bartlett. Best. Duffy. Lapore. Deputy Director James. Director Laura.
Yes. May I have a motion to move personnel? Moved by Deputy Director James, seconded by Free Holder Bartlett. Roll call.
Free holders, Bartlett. Best. Duffy. Lapore. Deputy Director James. Director Laura.
Yes. Motion for bills? Moved by Deputy Director James, seconded by Free Holder Bartlett. Roll call.
Free holders, Bartlett. Best. Duffy. Lapore. Deputy Director James. Director Laura.
Motion for certification, Bill? Moved by Deputy Director James, seconded by Free Holder Bartlett. Roll call.
Free holders, Bartlett. Best. Duffy. Lapore. Deputy Director James. Director Laura.
Yes. Received the departmental reports?
Received the file.
Before we adjourn, I would just like to thank, obviously, all of the students that have participated, as well as a special thank you to all of our administrative secretaries, Lisa, Josie, Lisa, and everyone in our office who made a great day, and thank you. And Caroline, all the rest of you, thank you so much. For all of you guys did, and everyone who participated today in Courthouse Plaza dedication, and Mr. William Bates, obviously, that was a very special occasion for all of us, and we thank you for your participation, and the family, and obviously, Mr. Bates for all of his contributions to the county of Passaic. Thank you all, and have a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Free Holder Duffy, seconded by Free Holder Lapore. Roll call.
Free holders, Bartlett. Best. Duffy. Lapore. Deputy Director James. Director Laura.
Yes.